The time is 4:30 PM. Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting on 14th September 2021 is called to order. I ask if you have not signed in on the clipboard by the back table, if you would do so before you leave, and if you have cell phones, please put them on vibrate. Roll call member Danielle.
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markcraft.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster.
Here.
Mayor Brent Fraser.
Here. I want to welcome each and every one of you here, our council chambers this evening, also those that are watching by Zoom, and then our, remember, our council meetings are broadcast on Channel 14 on Wednesday evenings. I just have a couple announcements for the next couple of weeks. Next Wednesday, September 27th, at 8 AM, the State Bondage Committee will be in Pelican Rapids to visit our swimming pool and also our dam area regarding possible funding for the new pool and possible funding for a bridge over the new Rock Rapids. And Tuesday, September 28th, at 4:30 PM, is our next city council meeting. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Harry Nunn.
Did you say 27th bonding?
Uh, 22nd. Wednesday, 22nd. Any other announcements? Harry Nunn, would you please stand for the flag of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here for speak on citizens' comment other than what's on the agenda this evening? Anyone? Okay, seeing none. Item number three is agenda additions or deletions. Any additions or deletions? Any additions or deletions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
It's approved.
Second? Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Harry Nunn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same. Motion carried. Item number four, approval of consent, agenda on legal items. Item number four A is approval of minutes for the council meeting on August 31st, 2021. Four B is approval of accounts payable listing. Four C one is police chief report, which is in your packet. Four C two is financial report, which is in your packet. And four D is served unpaid utility bill in the amount of $234.41 for access of 101 five southeast first street. Is there a motion to approve?
Approved.
Second? Motion second, discussion. Hold B. Hold B? Let's go to the end here.
Early.
Okay. No, second. Okay. All the items except item four B. Is there a motion to approve? Oh, excuse me.
All in favor, signify.
No, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same. Motion carried. Okay, now we'll go to four B.
So I saw in the library report that we got a bill for the, we did get a bill for the roof, but did I see that in?
They've been tabled it.
Yeah, they tabled it.
Library report tabled, but that'd be paid at this time.
So it's not on the bill listing this time.
Okay. Okay. Now, item number five is street parks report, Superintendent.
Just wait a second.
Don't we have to approve bills?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Excuse me, move to approve the council tables.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Harry Nunn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same. Now we'll go to street park report, Superintendent Brian Holson.
All right, just pretty quick. We have been kind of busy. We lost our summer help, the two, two park guys, so we picked all that up and we've been trying to do trees and, and storm sewer maintenance and, uh, which has been more repairs than maintenance and so, um, been doing a lot of, a lot of maintenance this time of the year, so, um, FYI, the annual jetting has started, so you'll see our jetter truck and back out, um, and about in streets and neighborhoods. This year, we do the majority of the southeast along with all the clay pipes, so predominantly be in the southeast once we're done here, so. And then also hydrant flushing, I know it's almost a month away yet, but it's October 10th from 7 AM to 3 PM, and that is a Sunday again. So that, that will be coming up and, and we'll try to remind you again before, before then, of course, but, um, parks and, the parks are still open, campground's still continuing, continually been busy. It's, it's been a busy year up in the parks. I'm anxious to see the numbers when we, uh, close in October. Pool, had a, had a fairly decent year on the pool and unfortunately I couldn't find my stats from last year, but this, this year, um, we didn't get open until the 23rd of June just due to staffing, trying to get our lifeguards trained and, and qualified to be there. We ended up with seven guards that did a great job, all seven of them, um, first year guards, really did a nice job and our manager did also, um, kept it moving. We had 27 family passes, 24 children passes and three adult passes for the summer and we averaged about 44 patrons a day through there. Uh, the highest days were at 81 and the lowest days were at nine. And there was approximately 2,256 people that used it, you know, a lot of the same ones, but throughout the summer, so it was, uh, it was really good. And then we, we're only able to get two sessions of swimming lessons in and 80 students took swimming lessons this year, so, um, they, they did have to turn a few people away just because the classes were so big and we couldn't have time for another session, so next year, hopefully, uh, we either have a new pool or we can get this one open and, and have better staffing right away, so. Uh, any questions on any of that?
Do you know, uh, where all the people came from for the lessons?
Um, I do not know where they came from. Looking at the names, there was a lot of names did not recognize from locally and I know they'd said that there was people from Fergus coming to, uh, to register because I don't believe the Y had them this year. So, and, and Danielle could probably answer that a little clearer because they answer the phone here a lot, but.
Yeah, and that was the one that I heard about with the line saying Fergus wasn't doing nothing, so a lot of people from Fergus.
Yep, so.
Any questions?
We'll hear that. I saw in the paper, it says, uh, a couple times ago, it said there's a law禁ban. I didn't know any law.
Oh, I think it's restriction. I'm, I'm not aware of a ban.
What we did was, we were just following what a lot of the state was doing. We were just advising people to kind of consider because of the drought to conserve water. That's all we were doing.
Was there a problem?
No, no problem. We were just trying to encourage people to.
Yeah.
That's why it was in the paper and that's why it was on Facebook and that's why it was stuff on the city website, just to let people, uh, with the ban going on, just to encourage them to conserve water for no reason other than it's drought.
And then I read about saying the law禁on line, but that's probably not it.
That, that is, that is the city hall office, but yes, they tell me you can do it online now, so that's exciting.
I forgot. One more question about the pool. Do you, have you talked to any of the guards that are going to come back next year?
Um, a lot of them sounded like it. The only one I'm not certain on is the one that was WSI certified, our instructor, and she did super good, so I'd love to get her back actually, because she was, uh, really good and a lot of compliments with her and the kids, so. Working on her too, so, um, so far, so good. She hasn't said no.
Any other questions for Ryan? I thought it was most of the streets. Second, motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Harry Nunn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same. Motion carried.
Perfect, thank you.
Item number six is Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Update. We have Elizabeth Leefell here with us this evening, as she has been previously, and there was handout in your packet and she's going to cover that handout, correct?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Got to tilt this down a little bit. I don't know, my voice is usually pretty loud, so I'm not sure how much I need it, but, um, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It's great to see all of you again. Um, I'm here on behalf of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities and, um, I'm going to give you our annual update. If you want to go on to the next slide. Um, as I think most of you know, but for the audience's benefit, we are an organization of cities across the state. We're actually up to 109. I think we added five or more within the last year. We've actually had a lot of growth over the last 10 to 15 years or more, you know. Um, yeah, Pelican Rapids has been a long time member, but we've really been adding cities really in every corner of the state, um, which is pretty exciting because it allows us to do our work a little bit better. Um, our, you know, the biggest issue we work on is, uh, LGA and property taxes, but we also work on environment and energy, that's what I do, transportation, annexation and land use and economic development. And I'm going to talk a little bit about sort of what the session looked like and what we did. It was an interesting year, I think, for all of us, and I use interesting in a Minnesota kind of way. Um, but, uh, you know, this month of August was the, or excuse me, well, last month of August, now it's September, I guess, was the first month in 18 months we haven't had a legislative session. It kept going and going and going since last February of 2020, um, due to the ongoing pandemic and that had an impact on how we, how we did things. It also meant we were working on things, um, we were working on bonding late until October last year. We were working a lot and have continued to work on how federal funds will get dispersed and that's on top of what we would normally be doing. You know, there was an election in between. We thought that might have a change in how things were done up there, but really there was no switch in control, just a little bit of, you know, shaving around the edges of majorities, but things pretty much stayed the same. Um, and I tell you, a year of pandemic and protests just made it a really interesting year and, uh, took a little bit longer to get the work done, but they did finish the budget up in time so that we didn't have a shutdown. If you want to go into the next slide. This is us. This is what legislating during the pandemic looked like. I think all of these are pictures of me and my colleagues testifying at various legislative hearings. Um, you know, the Capitol was closed to the public. We finally got to step foot in there this past June. Um, House and Senate office buildings were closed, they continue to be closed. I haven't been in those buildings in over, since last March of 2020, which is really weird. Um, no in-person committee meetings, very, very few legislative meetings in person and lobbying was really done via Zoom, email, phone and text. Um, you know, it really be, you know, legislators' cell phone numbers were really hot property over the last year and a half because that was the easiest way to get a hold of them. If you want to move on to the next page. You know, we adapted and this is a new normal. It's, uh, here's one of the many newspaper columns that we placed across the state. Um, you know, we normally have a Legislative Action Day in February, couldn't do it, so instead we had advocacy weeks, each focusing on a different topic. Um, we did guest columns like the one there on specific issues, really, um, increased our social media game, we did an LGA video and then the other thing we did that I hope, you know, we have some opportunity to continue is Zoom meetings with legislators. I'll be honest, it's a lot easier to lobby somebody in person, but the one advantage that Zoom really provided us is that we could get, you know, multiple members of the CGMC, our mayors, council members and staff, kind of in the same virtual room with legislators and that is impressive when they've got people from all corners of the state talking about how important local government aid is or how this, um, you know, environmental funding is so important. And so that really, I think, made a difference. I'm, I'm hoping we are going to be seeing people in person next session, but I hope they also allow for the use of virtual meetings as well to really help with the Greater Minnesota advocacy. Um, top goals for this year, probably none are a surprise, but, um, no LGA cuts. We were really hoping for a bonding bill, tried to push on childcare funding and city streets. Now, in the packet that I sent you, in addition to the PowerPoint, you'll see that there were also handouts and there's one that even has an overview of what we did if you want more in depth, but, um, I'm going to walk through a couple of the highlights. Now, going into the last budget session, I'll be honest, we were a little bit nervous. Um, November is when they do the first forecast and as you can kind of see from this diagram, they were predicting for the, um, biennium that there was going to be a big budget deficit and if you've been around long enough, you may remember what happens when there's big budget deficits. They start looking for targets and local government aid and other county, city aids are, uh, always, you know, always a target in their sights. So that, you know, making sure that didn't happen was the top priority for our legislative session. Our, uh, our motto was paid on time and in full and, um, you know, we were really, really aggressive about this, um, nothing to chance there because, you know, LGA is important both to the sort of making it through the pandemic as well as like economic recovery as we get out. Um, really worked hard on the lobbying and had a guest column, you know, published in, in multiple newsletters, many, many meetings with legislators in the governor's office. Um, we even did our own commercial, if you look on the, uh, the next page, I should say video, you can see, uh, uh, you know, we had CGMC members from across the state, little video talking about how important LGA is in each corner of the state and really nothing to chance there. Um, but the budget picture got bigger, better and so they do, the budget forecasts they rely on are the, the November and the February and so when the February came out, you can see that the budget picture got a lot better and it started looking like we were having a surplus. Um, with that, with that surplus, I mean, and part of that was the economy approving, part of that was federal funds coming in, um, LGA was deemed safe. So then what we did was we made sure that all of our cities were held harmless. There's a few cities like Detroit Lakes, for example, um, who would have been losing money under, just because of the way the formula works. It's a dynamic formula, um, and so we made sure that there were no cities left behind and, um, then we started talking about looking to the future. Um, one of the things we always find in, at the legislature is somebody always wants to know more about the LGA formula because everybody, you know, they like LGA, but they always want more for their city and so there was a lot of discussion and I think we'll continue to see this about if it's time to redo the formula, um, just, you know, it's, uh, it's been a while, it's been since 2013 that we looked at it, but it is something that tends to be looked at by the legislature about every decade after there's a census and that's something that we will be working hard on this year. Um, you know, at our, our, uh, summer conference, we had a few, uh, I guess it's now a month and a half ago, um, over in Alexandria, we had the tax chairs there, they all expressed how much, how important they think LGA is, but that they also want to look at the formula to make sure it still works and rest assured, we will be very, very active in that. We've got our lobbyists, we've got our analysts, we have our outside analysts so that every scenario can be analyzed and we'll be making sure that the formula makes sense and that any changes are paid for so that we don't have cities losing out as a result. For the kids, um, childcare continues to be, you know, this was something when I started lobbying with the, the CGMC about a decade ago, was not, not something we worked on, but over the last five or more years, it has become an increasingly important issue and has become really, sort of during the pandemic, really highlighted how significant this is to economic development in a lot of places. So really worked hard on this. Um, some of the things we were able to achieve was getting more money for the initiative foundations so that they can work on solutions that are more tailored to each part of the state. We put more money into the deed care grant program with at least half of that guaranteed for Greater Minnesota. Funds for redevelopment in Greater Minnesota can now be used for childcare facilities and we also helped make sure that there was childcare facility funds from the feds that are going to childcare as well. Housing, housing also a really big issue. This, um, is something we worked really hard on, had some bills introduced, um, you know, multiples, um, times when we were testifying, a lot of lobbying. The challenge was is that what we were seeking was bonding money and if you don't have a bonding bill, you don't get bonding funds and unfortunately, I mean, the, this is, you were just talking about bonding earlier, the even year is the typical year. We were hoping that given the pandemic and everything that they would do a bonding bill and there was at least at the beginning of the session, some interest in it, but I think the difficulties they had getting the regular budget done sort of made it harder to get this one done. Um, then the next topic, broadband. This is something that we've worked on sort of on and off throughout the years. We, we helped establish, I don't know, five or six years ago, the border-to-border broadband program and really got folks focused on the rural areas. Um, this year, what we saw was that we saw more money going into that program than we've ever seen before. Um, I think the pandemic really helped highlight the need for more emphasis on this area. PFOS, my favorite topic. Well, not really my favorite topic, but it's what I spend a lot of my time on and that's, I think I talked to you guys about it last time, perinpolyfluoralecils substances. That's what's in your Teflon, your Gore-Tex jackets and it's, um, health concern in the waters. Um, it's been shown to cause different health problems. Um, it's very expensive to get out of your drinking water, but nearly impossible to get out once it's in your wastewater, so we had to tackle it from both sides and, um, the thing we spent a lot of time working on over the last, um, both in 2020 and got it done in 2021 was what we called the municipal source initiative strategy and that is really aimed at trying to identify what are the most likely causes, um, you know, of the PFOS getting into your wastewater systems and what can we do to try and prevent more of that and trying to create some tools that cities can actually use and help educate our wastewater operators and, and so forth on that. Very happy to see that funded. We also blocked some legislation that, um, you know, had good intentions, but really was, I would call it overly broad and could have potentially held cities liable for the presence of PFOS, um, in their wastewater or even drinking water, even when they had nothing to do with it getting in. It's something, again, it's a topic that we'll, we'll continue to be, um, working on, I would, I would guess for the next four or five years or more. There's a lot of discussion on it at the state and federal level, so we are paying close attention to, to it. Um, a couple other environmental issues I'll just mention, chloride, we are seeing a lot of cities facing, uh, chloride limits in their permits, so it's really important for us to help cities address that, so we helped get money into a program that will help cities, um, control it at the source side because like PFOS, it's really hard to get out of there. Um, point source implementation grant program, also something we've been working on is, that's just something we try every year to make sure we get some funds put in there and, um, even though we didn't have a bonding bill, there was money, you know, um, put into it through the clean water legacy fund and that's something that we worked on all last year as well. Um, there is again in the packet of material we sent you, a complete report on environment. I, I could talk about wastewater forever. I think you all know that about me, but I won't and we'll move on to the next topic. Bonding, I think I mentioned this before, it was a top priority in 2020. It was one of those things we hoped would be done by May 2020, but it took until October to get it done and a lot of our time, especially me and the other folks who work more directly on that subject, you know, during the summer and fall last year was pushing and making sure that it got done. I mean, even up till the end, because you need the super majority in both bodies, there were people who didn't want to do it, got it done, large bill, record amounts for water and a lot of our other priorities like BDPI, um, housing programs and local roads and bridges. Um, we had hoped, like I mentioned earlier in the presentation, thank you, that we could get something done in the 2021 session, really thought that it should have been a priority and there were, there were hearings in both, well, there are hearings in the House, they even came out with their own bill on it. I'll be honest, um, the bill was too metro focused and even their author recognized that, I think he, uh, recognized during the hearing several times that he didn't have the votes to pass it. Senate unfortunately never came out with their bill, so, um, you know, we did a lot of work on it, we were hoping that there would be something in the June special session, never happened. Um, I, I, I am guessing we are not going to see a bonding bill until next year, but it's something we'll continue to push on because there's really, you know, there's the important projects like you have that you're seeking as well as the grant programs that we really want to see funded for the whole state. Next page. Um, small, small city street funding, this is also again, something that we have continued to work on. We were able to, it must be six or seven years ago now, I think I've been doing this for too long, um, lobbying, that is, no, um, we helped establish a small city street program because, you know, cities under 5,000 don't have the same eligibility. So we created that program, but getting steady funding has been something that we have been pushing on and pushing on. We would like to see, ultimately our goal is to see a steady funding source for that, but I'll be honest, sort of at a bigger picture, stepping back from this program, getting everybody to agree, even within, quite frankly, within parties themselves, um, on how we should be funding, um, streets is something that's very difficult. So what we have had to do is push for one-time money. Happy to say we were able to get $18 million for the program, not nearly as much as needs, but again, it's keeping that in people's minds and continuing to push for ongoing funding. Kind of see here, probably got, may have gotten your check already, just under $50,000. I don't know if it showed up or not, but, um, uh, I don't know when that shows up, so I apologize. Like I said, I do wastewater analysis, I can add a shame on that, but it is, again, it's, um, I, I think it's important that we get you that, obviously we'd like to, you know, increase that amount in the future. And, uh, we're already looking forward to, um, 2022, um, you know, already starting to talk about LGA with folks, already working on, um, the bonding bill, um, you know, talking with chairs, working on other issues, um, you know, including housing and, and land use issues, so it's really something we've already starting to work on. The LGA formula will be a very big topic that we'll be discussing over the next year or two and, um, a large bonding bill is really going to also be top on our priority. We'll be watching redistricting because that's going to have an impact on Greater Minnesota. Unfortunately, you know, a lot of the population has shifted towards the metro area, so we'll be watching to make sure that, you know, we're not left out in the cold when they're drawing districts. Um, and it's going to be an interesting year because not only is the governor up for election, but, um, all of the legislative seats are up for election. If you remember back to 2010, it was just the, excuse me, yeah, 2010 was, excuse me, 2012 was just the legislature, but this year it's legislature and governor and, um, always makes for interesting legislating because people have an eye not only on what's best for the state, but also on the election, so, um, going to be a fun year. Um, and then what's coming up, we have our fall conference in Wilmer and then our Legislative Action Day in March. Both of those are great events. Our Legislative Action Day is probably our biggest event out of all of them. We're really hoping and planning that this will be in person, um, and get a chance to talk to legislators, you know, you know, one-on-one in person, both at the events we hold and then at the later dinners. So if you can make it, it's a great, great way to connect. And then I just again want to thank you, um, Pelican Rapids has been an active member over the years and really, you know, what allows us to get things done is sort of the active membership from across the state, both in terms of, you know, the work we do together, having different legislators representing different parts of the state and really the, just the active voice, um, of the lobbyists combined with our city council members, mayors and staff really makes us successful. So thank you for all you, you do.
Any questions for Elizabeth? Elizabeth, when, uh, does the redistricting take place?
Um, I knew you were going to say that. Um, it is, so they are starting to work on it. The challenge is going to be, is that, um, you know, we're running behind because the, the, the delayed, you know, release of the information and so both the House and the Senate have redistricting committees and they are working on sort of coming up with their own plans, but the legislature doesn't actually start until January 31st of next year. So in theory, um, they will both pass their own plan, they'll come together, come with a unified one, um, that would be the best case scenario. Realistically, we haven't seen a, uh, you all, you all know this, we haven't seen the legislature approve a red, you're laughing, a redistricting plan. There is a, um, uh, the, the, you know, a lawsuit was filed in the court, which is typically how it triggers sort of the court action and they are also running a parallel sort of system, so there, I can't remember the exact deadlines, I can, I can get those to you, but basically the court is also working on its own. They try to step back, let the legislative process work, but they also recognize if they don't do anything now that we'll be in real, real problems. So I would expect we're going to be starting to see stuff, you know, coming out in February, you know, we've been getting the more detailed stuff, but we'll probably know, I'm guessing, in March because with our earlier primary that, you know, pushes back all of the filing dates, um, and whatnot, so we're going to have to have that done. So I, I would be surprised if the courts, if anything, it's, it's probably going to be the courts deciding the lines, I'd be surprised if it was something else. They have a, I would say the one good thing about it is, is the five judge panel, they've got quite a few from Greater Minnesota on that panel, so I was, I was really glad to see that.
Thank you. Any other questions? What do PFOS come from?
You know, so there are, there are a class of man-made chemicals and so there are about, there's over 4,000 of them and they, they get their name because they all have, um, fluor- fluoride and oxygen compounds in them and I don't remember who first invented them, but they're, I mean, they're manufactured by companies like 3M, DuPont, you know, Gore-Tex, um, and so it comes from the manufacturing process. How they end up in the environment, sort of where you see, like up in Bemidji, they've had to, they're, you know, adding new water treatment facilities because it was in their firefighting foam, which they were doing the firefighting practice right above their water table and so it sunk, you know, they, they didn't know it was harmful, sunk into the water table and now their water wells are infected. They've got some problems in the metro area because that was where, again, before people realized they were dangerous, they, um, the 3M manufacturing, you know, that was where stuff was leaking into the water table over there. So that's where the really big sources are. They're trying, you know, there's other types of, um, you know, manufacturing processes that use it. Um, like I said, they've, they're switching out, you know, they're trying to look on switching out things, compostable, um, packaging. Up until recently, um, a lot of your compostable packages had PFOS in there because it's Up until recently, a lot of your compostable packages had PFAS in there because it's got a lot of really great chemical, what, characteristics in it, yeah, but if it's leaching out into the water or into the, you know, because one thing they're discovering is that because it was in the compostable materials, it was ending up in compost, which ends up in leachate, which can then up in, you know, wherever they take the leachate to, so. But at the end of the day, it comes from man-made chemicals, but how it gets into the water systems really depends. I mean, they're starting to study whether, you know, sort of burning things can end up putting it into the air, so a lot of different ways it ends up there, so that's why they're, we're trying to try and tackle it at the source. Because once it gets, it's like a lot of other things, once it gets in, it's hard to get out.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Great to see you and I hope to see some of you at some of our upcoming events, so thank you.
Moving on, item number seven, MINDOT response to the city petition, we have Tom Pace here from District 4, you're trying to make some, leave time to talk about the response to the city petition and also the upcoming public open house meeting on 30th of September.
That is correct, we'll start that. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm down here a lot, which is kind of fun, so thanks for having these great questions for me to come down here and visit you guys on, we'll look at those in a bit here, but yeah, the open house, well, some of the stuff I'll share tonight, we'll also talk in greater detail at the open house. It is Thursday, September 30th, starting at 5:00 to 7:30. There'll be official presentation at 5:30 where we will present the layout, go into great detail about everything that's in there, has a schedule, budgeted everything else in there and then, otherwise well, people available for questions, so it'll be a really good time to be there to ask and learn and all that good stuff. So, any questions on that before I move on? All right, so yes, I'm here to talk about the petition that MINDOT received here just last week from the last council meeting. And there are quite a few things to digest in there, so I'm probably just walk through one at a time and then have a good discussion and then hopefully we can move, get through them fairly quickly. So there are three things that presented to MINDOT, first of was in the lane layout width and parking questions. So the petition said, we identified three issues that we need to work with, out with MINDOT, so the first one being that. As you know, MINDOT's been working with the city, I think, quite extensively on the lane width. MINDOT has, this is fought hard to keep, 12-foot driving lanes, 10-foot parking, something that greatly exceeds what Central Office has proposed, what everybody else has proposed, so we've been working with you guys on keeping that, that width. In the petition, you guys had an example of a layout that was presented in a value engineering study, which you showed 12-foot driving and have the bike lanes in between the parking and the driving lanes. That was presented to our, as part of our VE study back in April, our value engineering study, and at that time, the VE team with the city involved said that was pretty poor fit for downtown Pelican Rapids. Some of the reasons were, people didn't want their bicyclists riding between parked cars and traveling public. It was deemed, it felt it was unsafe by, by that group then. As far as I know, this proposal has never been built in Minnesota where that bike lane is in between parked cars and traveling public, basically because it's a very unsafe maneuver. People don't, are going to use it, so why build it? Another part of the, part of the VE presentation was, was cost. If that proposal is built, we're going to be, the bike lane probably would be paid for by MINDOT, I mean, by the city, and MINDOT will not cost participate in that because that's, MINDOT's not going to pay for a sidewalk and a bike lane, we do a cost share as part of the shared use path concept and not pay for both. In the exhibit, in the petition, you guys had nine-foot sidewalk, two-foot boulevard, if we're to follow this concept, then that's not going to work. We need at least four to five feet boulevard on both sides for, for street lights, for signs, for trees, for, for other things to be putting in. So if you want to have, you know, this layout, we're going to have reduced driving lane or parking lane, or make it fit. The most narrow we could go is eight-foot sidewalk on both sides because we have door swings, so for ADA guidelines, we need eight-foot sidewalk minimum. So if we have a four or five-foot boulevard, then we have to reduce our, our parking lane or driving lane. One of the first things the city said to MINDOT was, we want 10-foot parking, we want 12-foot driving, so that's what we fought for. And so that's what we're proposing, proposing to go on this one. Probably not what the city council wants to hear, but you guys have any questions so far? Imagine, imagine you do, Steve?
So, what is the exact number of parking spaces we're removing?
Six.
Six total?
Six, six on Howie 59. See, previously, there was a 14 number floating around, a 14 slots of parking floor, that was earlier, earlier, that wasn't our final layout, that was earlier in our design process. And since then, after, after the demo project, actually, we redesigned our mini roundabouts to fit better in the intersections by shifting the alignment further away from the major quadrants. And so we were able to get it down from 14 down to six. So that's pretty huge, that's amazing, I think, for our design team to get down to six slots of parking stalls on 59. And one is downtown in front of the hardware store because of the ballabout, we need to have one there because, and need room for people to, can't park in the middle of a ballabout for that mid-block crossing, that affects parking there as well, so. So yeah, so I think that was really, really cool, so, yeah.
So when you said just 15, or just 10, or 59, I'm sorry.
Yep.
You're not, so like 108s, east-west, we're losing there also.
Yep, absolutely.
But you're not counting that?
Not yet, with the six number. It's hard to tell because there's no, no parking stalls marked on 108s, you know, so it could be, the number I've heard is 15 for both east and west, lots of parks, it's a lot, I mean, it's more than zero, obviously. You know, so for the petition to say there's no, no lots of parking, that's not, that's not, not, not realistic. You know, we have to have lots of parking to fit in many roundabouts and for ballabout construction and everything else we have to do. So it's, it's not possible. So yeah, so again, probably not what you want to hear, but that's the realistic, the realistic as it is, so I'll be as transparent as we can be, so, so yeah. So.
So there's no other option except roundabouts being presented?
MINDOT's proposing mini roundabout, yeah. So far, like I said, in other council meetings, there is absolutely no reason to put back in a product that is, that is inferior to mini roundabout.
Even if the community doesn't want them?
Even if the community doesn't want them, it's MINDOT's paying for them, it's a MINDOT trunk highway, I mean, it'd be fiscally irresponsible, MINDOT, to put in something that costs more and is an inferior product. It doesn't make, doesn't make sense. I mean, why would we do that?
Cost to our community is pretty high.
The cost to community, it'd be cheaper to the community, wouldn't it? It's safer. Everything about mini roundabout is safer in every category there is. There is nothing out there that says a mini roundabout is less safe than a four-way stop sign or a two-way stop sign or a traffic signal.
You just don't have a history of accidents and injuries.
You don't, you do have some. There was a left turn, a pad crossing, 108 east, where a left turn hit a pedestrian, so there is some, and safety is only a part of it, it's not the whole picture. I mean, for 10-plus years, I'm hearing about, you know, traffic mobility issues in Pelican Rapids and ICE reports say that. You know, the level service, a level service being a delay in traffic and that exists today, especially in the summers, and today it exists, it's going to get worse, traffic's going to grow in Pelican Rapids. And our ICE reports demonstrated in 2032, we have a level service F in, for both, both systems. So that delay is vehicles are backing up to the other intersection. It's going to get worse.
I assume it's MINDOT that put in the talking lights or the buttons and ADA system downtown, right?
Mm-hmm.
But now that's not okay, are you throwing that out?
We are not throwing that out.
So it'll still be good?
It's being looked at, mini roundabouts currently, we're prying some down in cities where we are putting pad buttons in on mini roundabouts. There's a difference, there's things called rapid flashing beacons, RPBBs, which is a pedestrian warning symbol, there are things called HOC systems, where there's push buttons, there are things out there that if the city greatly wants to include that, we could, at your expense, but.
But the layout ICE does not include anything pedestrian, ADA.
That's correct, that's correct.
So how does that feel or save for, I don't, I don't get it.
Understandable, it's just hard, it's hard to grasp. Currently, 7% of vehicles yield to people at a stoplight, yield to people crossing a crosswalk, 7%. With the mini roundabout, 83% yield to them. And a stop sign, people run stoplights, people just go through too fast, they go, they ignore the stoplights, they ignore the yellow lights, they drive through, they speed up, they're looking at the lights, they're not looking at pedestrians. In the mini roundabout, you have to go slow, they're designed to slow you down, they're designed to go 15 to 20 miles per hour and that's it. So you come, you slow down, you look, you're making one move, you're taking a right only, you're not going left or right, you're straight, you're taking one movement only. So again, there are point of conflict, I talked about a lot, we're going from 32 points of conflict down to eight, you know, so it's safer for pedestrians, it's safer for traveling public, it's safer for those, and, you know, the crosswalk is not there, it's over, a parking stall away, so you take the corner, you see people crossing. It's shorter for those that are crossing as well, greatly, this is a greatly reduced crossing, you know, the mini roundabout because it's a lot shorter crossing, you push farther over, so what's this, is cross the street, whether it's 25 feet, whatever it is, and you get across. It's hard to grasp, I know, but it's, it's all the data, not just MINDOT, across the nation, you know, federal highways, you know, we had documentation that I could flood this room with, talking about mini roundabouts and full-blown roundabouts. And again, your question, and like I talked about for many, many months, is that the roundabouts are safer in every, every aspect there is, there is nothing out there that shows where a traffic signal is safer than a mini roundabout. And all safety, I talked about a lot, but also mobility, you know, mini roundabouts increase mobility by 50%, they reduce emissions by 35%, they reduce stopping by 35%. You know, so if you're in a big truck driving through mini roundabout, you're going to come up, you're driving around, if nobody's there, and keep on going. With the signal, you're stopping, you're looking, you're waiting, then you're gone. So people are going to back up more. You know, there's every aspect, mobility, efficiency, greenhouse gases, safety, I'm talking a lot, I know, but that's all information that's out there. You know, council, look it up, look up mini roundabouts, there's stuff on the website, you know, the Pelican Rapids MINDOT website talks about mini roundabouts, we have examples, you know, St. James, Minnesota, we built this thing, you know, 2017, lots of stuff we're doing, we're mimicking St. James. Call, call up St. James, talk, talk to city council, talk to the city ministry and the mayor, and they're going to be, they're going to tell you the things that, you know, that you want, the questions you have. You know, don't believe MINDOT if you don't want to, call, call St. James, talk to them. I've talked to them, I guarantee you, they're going to be, they're thrilled with it.
Matt Strahan has a question.
Yep.
Matt, is there a question, Paul?
Up here on your microphone.
Sure.
Thank you for recognizing me. So per MINDOT's own data, there are not safety gains in Pelican Rapids situation. Roundabouts do decrease serious crashes, that is absolutely correct, but if you plug in our 10-year crash history, we will save zero fatalities, zero serious injuries, zero major injuries, one minor injury every 22 years, and we will have a very, very minute increase in proper damage only crashes. In addition, MINDOT's own data shows that roundabouts cause 111.1% increase in bicycle crashes and a 17.3% increase in pedestrian crashes. So with MINDOT's own data, their own crash data and their own statistical data, we will see no increase in vehicle safety, one minor injury every 22 years. Meanwhile, we're getting ready to bring out all these bike facilities, huge increase, we're anticipating, you know, a mini-fold increase in bike activity, we're going to put in a feature that causes 111.1% increase, and this is MINDOT's own data.
True. Based on what, what study?
This is from MINDOT, this is MINDOT's single, single lane roundabout comprehensive data.
Mini?
For single lane roundabouts.
Mini roundabout?
In addition to many roundabouts.
There you go.
Many roundabouts, per MINDOT's own design guide, let me find it here. Bear with me. All right. Many roundabouts, so according to both MINDOT and the National Academies of Science, Engineering and Medicine's Transportation Research Board, suitable conditions for mini roundabouts should have average truck percentages of 3% or less. Do you know what Pelicans is offhand?
Four.
9.4.
Four to 6%.
9.4, I have MINDOT's data right here.
Yeah, is it practical? That number, that 3% is not, it's not a real number, actually.
It is according to both MINDOT and the National Academies of Science.
I talked about that, the exact number today, I've booked MINDOT as well, Traffic Engineer.
We're threefold over.
That 3% number, we talked about it elsewhere, but yeah, it's, it's a.
It's in the design manual.
The design, the manual was a flexibility design.
So where's the flexibility in going the other direction?
It's going from 11 to 12 and 9 to 10, so it's a lot of flexibility. What do you want, Matt?
Well, what we put forward, we can't lose parking, the community overwhelmingly doesn't want roundabouts, and project duration.
Okay, this, this, that stuff's easy to talk about.
I mean, but, I mean, I don't speak for the council, I'm just bringing MINDOT's facts that MINDOT publishes. And the bumpout, right now, there's a bumpout that's taped off at 60 feet in each direction, roughly, I stepped it off. For the MINDOT design, we shouldn't even do a bumpout. Through, if you go through the Traffic Engineering Manual, we should have a marked crosswalk with signs. If you wanted to increase that, another option that wouldn't take out parking would be do enhanced signage. There's also options to do 90-degree returns that don't remove parking, there's a lot of options, but you did a demonstration, and I can sit down if you want me to sit down, quit talking.
Go ahead, keep talking, good stuff.
You did a demonstration, you got overwhelming feedback from the community, the community told you what you demonstrated did not work.
But it did work.
No, the overwhelming consensus from the community was, it was not acceptable.
Well, what parts were not acceptable? 12-foot driving was not acceptable?
No.
10-foot parking not acceptable?
The big thing, people didn't like opening their car doors.
Didn't like it, didn't say it was acceptable. There's a big difference.
We had 104 businesses sign off that they preferred a layout that was previously presented by MINDOT. It's an acceptable MINDOT layout.
It is not an acceptable layout. It was, it was a recommendation of a BE study that was, it was rejected right away. This, this person that drew the root as for focus on biking pad only, they were not focused on parking, they're not focused on driving, that was the bike and pad, proposing bike lanes downtown.
Okay.
So yeah, it was not a approved MINDOT layout, it was just a recommendation of an APD study, and it was, it was clearly, it was rejected right away.
By who?
By, by MINDOT and by the value team.
Okay, so why were we given a chance to even talk about it then?
We're not talking about it.
No, no, it was part of the complete streets, we were even able to give feedback on that layout.
The VE team, they had, the city was part of the engineering team and the city council and the county were part of it, and MINDOT and the design team, we looked at that layout and, and it was rejected. Or one thing, the cost, it was increasing the cost of downtown, it doesn't work.
The cost of downtown, sure, I have that data too.
So.
Costs. Again, this is from the MINDOT, according to Minnesota's Best Practices for Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety, striped bike lanes cost $16,000 per mile versus $60,000 for four-foot or $100,000 for eight-foot shared use path. That's Minnesota's Best Practices for Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety. Okay, way, way less money.
For what?
For striped bike lanes versus shared use path. That's Minnesota's own, that's what Minnesota's.
Well, that makes sense because shared use path is concrete, it's paved, so what we're proposing is a shared use path of concrete on top of the sidewalk.
Okay, but it's a more expensive option.
Perhaps, perhaps. But this doesn't work in downtown Pelican.
Why?
There's not enough room for it. So Matt, do you want 10-foot parking lane or 11-foot driving lanes, what do you want? We can't have a 10-foot driving lane that's typical. We have to have at least four feet for a boulevard.
We can, I mean, we can go offline and, I don't want to, what would you like, Mr. Mayor?
We talked about this for hours and hours, we'll talk outside, we sure can afterwards, so.
I guess we'll have plenty of time.
Yeah. Yeah, bring, bring it there.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yep. All right, so we're, next one on the last tier was, probably, we have a lot of last stuff already, I'm sure, about the mini roundabouts, you know, proposed, have benefits versus signal systems. The biggest one, duration versus one year versus two years, that's always, that's a very good question. As part of the VE presentation we did back in April, we also looked at this extensively, we put materials and costs to everything else and, and with this, with the city utility work below ground, there is no way we can do this in one, in one year, it's just, it's not possible. I mean, I don't think people understand that kind of work and need to replace, you know, sanitary water and sewer. Do you guys know how much, how much time it takes? Do you guys know how much, how much, how much time it takes? Do you understand the process? A lot of people don't, I can explain to you if you want me to.
We said four times you have to move the earth.
What's that?
Four times you have to move the earth.
At least.
So take us through that.
Okay. I'll do it quickly, I can talk, by what we'll do, we'll come into, we'll take one block. First thing, first thing, go ahead.
No, no.
Oh, okay, yes, I had a question. First thing you do, we're to peel off the pavement. And we're, we're gonna leave one sidewalk in place, that's for our pedestrians to use. Why do we peel off all the sidewalk, peel off all the pavement, excavate down to the bottom, I would just say, the sewer line. It's probably 15 feet deep. Go down 15 feet, lay in, lay in that sewer line. Move over 10 feet, because we have guidelines we gotta follow, gotta be 10 feet away. So fill that trench back in, move over 10 feet, dig it down the line, put in the sanitary water. Move over 10 feet and pull out the old lines. So yeah, we're digging down a trench, filling that in, moving over, digging another one, filling it in, going over and putting in another line for stormwater. They were, they were removing old facilities, they were digging to peoples, to the right way line, to all the homes, all businesses. We gotta put our lines into all those places as well. So we're down there 15, 20 feet, the whole block is, is torn up. And we're moving dirt, there's probably three or four backhoes going like crazy and they're doing this. And when it's all filled, then we start filling back to the top. We're filling the dirt, compact it, fill it back in so it meets MINDOT standards, you know, with sand and class five, and then, you know, last that would be paving. And when you get closer, then we build a sidewalk, you know, that's gonna be multiple pores, because we have driveways, we have curb ramps, we have mid-block crossing, it's all separate pores, then we, and then the curb and gutter is poured separately from the sidewalk. And we're tying into stairs or retaining walls or out there. It's a lot of work, it takes very, it takes a long time. You gotta figure probably a block, you know, four to six weeks to do one block. If you want to get down, I guess a lot, you're down there deep, a long time, digging lots of dirt.
So Tom, when you go down, you said, you know, four times.
Mm-hmm.
So are you going down so far initially and then doing the four bridges? You're not starting from the top?
Every time. Because the back was, it says it someplace.
Why? I'm just asking.
It's a good question. People don't understand how long it takes to put in sanitary water and sewer or stormwater. It's, it's very slow, it's a lot of dirt, and it takes a long time to do. It's not, you can't do much, if it rains, you're down for two, three days. You know, stuff happens, so it's a very slow process, and you wanna do it right, so you have to take your time and be safe. We're down there, you know, we had trenches and trench boxes, and people are down there working, and machinery running back and forth and trucks and materials all over. It's a very convoluted, busy block that you definitely don't, don't be walking down, so. Yeah, I mean, to do that, and Pelican is 25 blocks of complete streets. You know, that's 25 blocks of city water and sewer replacing. So think about that, you're talking, you know, we can go faster, we pass, we can, but it's gonna, it's gonna take two, four years to do this project. And what we're, what we're proposing and doing is doing the downtown portion first. So 2024, May 1st, we're coming in, we're gonna close off between the intersections, we're gonna pull off the pavement, do it between intersections, build the mini roundabouts, all that, that'd be the first stage of the first product. So after probably end of June of 2024, the downtown piece is done. The mini roundabouts are in, the building phase, build phase is done. So that section of downtown is gonna be fully done in two months, not two years. Getting there is gonna be tough, obviously, with going down the directions, but the downtown piece is done. They were going up the hill towards the top of the hill and down towards the school and all, all different directions. So the plan is to do 59 the first year, much as we can, and then work in 108 the second year. You know, so then there's the whole, town is not closed for two years, I mean, just block by block by block. And yeah, we'll have staging and we're gonna have detours, and it's not gonna be an easy product, there's just no way to get around it. So the city council, I mean, the city has a, this is, if I just amend that job, we do it, do it one season. We could come in and do everything, curb and gutter, mill and pave, sidewalk in one year, no problem. But the sanitary, the below ground stuff, it's very, very slow, tedious work. There's no way to make it faster.
Tom, will you say the dates again? When, how much will downtown, like the big block go?
Two months, hopefully.
It's new this year?
It is, it is new. As people have stuff out there, there's, you know, sharing things that probably aren't quite, you know, with current, you know, as old, dad, old dad assumptions, rumor mills. Yep.
I'm asking kind of a statistical question here, but if you had a year like this where it was dry all summer.
Yep.
As compared to a normal year, how much would that speed it up? Or statistically, can you say how much are you gonna get delayed by rain? I guess is, is that a fair question?
It's a great question, yeah, it's a good, you know, I can't say for sure, you know, how long, you know, if we had a great summer after this year, you know, if we, if we had that in 2024, we'll get, we'll get more done for sure, obviously. You know, hopefully we're not hitting anything unforeseen, you know, some sort of weird utility or a coal chute or some buried bone or something, you know what we'll find down there, but hopefully it goes smooth. It will increase, we'll get more done for sure. I can't say exactly percentage, because you don't know too what's, what's down there. And hopefully the materials is good. You underneath 59, there's a budget, there's a layer of concrete down there that's gonna be removed. You know, it's down there a couple of feet, that's, you know, with the road, it has to take more time to bust out, get that out there too, it's also slowing down a little bit. If it rains, you know, hopefully we can pump things out and drain it, or we'll move to a different spot and start working, but could be two, three days depending on rain. If it rains, you know, four inches, we're down for a week, probably. If it rains quarter inch, a couple hours, depends on, you know, drainage. They'll, they'll try to keep things dry as much as they can. They'll put in weep trenches and try to protect it so the stuff isn't flooded, but if there's water, we'll pump it out and keep on working best we can, so. But yeah, it's, it's gonna be tough.
And Tom, I think there was some misconception, conception that people I've talked to about the two-year duration. People I've talked to thought everything on 59 and 108 within the city.
All at once.
Pull up the same guy.
Yeah, it hasn't been very clearly defined. I mean, that's, that's, you know, a lot of stuff out there, I know rumor mills, but we haven't really presented a layout yet. Now, we're going to in a couple of weeks. You guys have heard more than anybody else in the city, probably, but what's, what's happening out there, so. And hopefully the city council is working with those and answering questions. If you're not, contact me and we can get, you know, the correct information out there. You know, because a lot of stuff flows out pretty quickly and spreads like wildfire, so.
Tom, the two feet under, so Matt, I don't know about that. What's that?
The, the two...
You said it's two feet, there's a layer?
There's a layer, old high 59 underneath the current 59 yet.
Five feet under?
I think it's actually like five feet down there. It's down there a ways.
How many?
Well, a lot of times they leave stuff, they usually leave it in place and go over top of it and to pull it out. It's a lot cheaper to just go over things and, you know, now we have to deal with it now in 2024 with, with your project, with our project when it comes through and, because we have to get it out there to put in the new water and sewer, you know, all facilities, so we have to move it out to get it all the way. Otherwise, we wouldn't have to. It's not that uncommon, there's a lot of stuff buried out there, we just go over it because we don't need to move it, we're not gonna move it, so.
Well, you know, Main Street used to be like a story lower.
Exactly. Yeah.
Their storefronts are on the basement.
Everything that was raised up is still, is still down there. So I'm sure, I'm sure we'll find stuff we're not expecting. We're gonna find coal chutes and gas lines and steam stuff and probably buried things down there, so. So we talked a little bit about the lane width, talked about the stoplights, we talked about the one versus two years. What else we need to talk about? You know, that, that report, and I mentioned the Vancouver study about traffic circles. That report really is an apples to apples to this, to mini roundabouts. And the Vancouver study talked about traffic circles, they call those, and those are basically just small 20 to 25-foot things they put in the middle of two-way and four-way stops. They're not MINDOT, they're not even designed for pedestrians, not designed for bicyclists, they're just, they're basically just traffic calming only. You know, these mini roundabouts are gonna have splitter islands, we're gonna have signage, we're gonna have crosswalks, we're gonna have different things that will slow people down. These weren't designed to slow people down, really. They were just, I'm not sure what the purpose was for those, but they're not mini roundabouts, they're called traffic circles in Vancouver, so. So that, I can see about that, why that was unsafe, because there's nothing there to slow people down, just drive around a big concrete thing in the middle of the road, so.
I just wanna be perfectly clear.
Perfectly clear.
Just in my head, so I can... Regardless if the community as a whole, I'll say the majority.
Mm-hmm.
Of the community does not want roundabouts. A majority of the businesses in the community do not want roundabouts. This state of Minnesota is going to put roundabouts.
Yeah, until we, you get some good valid reason for not putting them in, there's no reason why we wouldn't. You know, I, that's not a good valid reason. I mean, it comes down to being fiscally responsible. I mean, if, it's not just current, sure it's cheaper to, to build, it's cheaper to maintain, it's everything about it. If there's a good valid reason that we're missing, why do you wanna keep inferior products? It's gonna cost more money to maintain, more money to build and, and everything else, I mean, please bring it, present it and move it forward, so.
I don't, I don't understand why it's more expensive to maintain. Can you, can we pay the electric bill for the...
Yes, you do. And you pay for paint?
Can we pay for the maintenance?
You pay for, yes, more expensive.
So it's not any more money for you, for me? Since the city pays for it anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Mm-hmm. So then, why the city will spend more money for an inferior product? I mean, that's up to you guys to decide, but...
And that's what the community wants, and that's what our business community wants. You told us several times that this project is done. MINDOT is out of here for 20 years.
Hopefully longer. Right, right.
But I just, I don't understand why...
Yeah, I mean, that's part of it.
We're gonna, we're taking on the maintenance of it.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming we're gonna take on the payment of installing them.
You will not.
So you'll install...
There's a MINDOT tronk highway, MINDOT pays for insulation of them.
Okay.
And then this, this city pays for electricity and for maintaining them, so.
And they have the structure underneath.
Right. They're, they're expensive. They're very expensive to put in. So that's, you know, that's why MINDOT is saying, we're not gonna spend more money for something that's inferior in every, every aspect, that's...
But you're not spending more money, you're just spending the same money.
A lot more money, just to put them in. No, there are a lot more money to put in. Signals are a lot more expensive than mini roundabouts, right, full blown roundabouts, so. Yeah.
I think Tom would like to go on.
My name's Everett Ballard, I'm a businessman in town, I've been here all my life. And when this, and I'm gonna say, just like it is, when this circus started over a year and a half ago, MINDOT and Partnership for Health, you guys came to us and you said you were gonna value what our city, what they, their input and stuff. A year ago, a year and a half ago, roundabouts weren't even mentioned, period. That's been like, what, six months ago? And you guys have got all these, I've seen bike lanes all over state of Minnesota that are right next to the driving lane down in those Twin Cities. But when it comes to these computer models and all this stuff, there's, there's no way that anybody with an ounce of common sense and sitting downtown and looking at any time during the day can look and say, this mini roundabout and these narrow lanes are gonna make it safer than what we already have. What we've got has been there 70, 80 years and it has no problem. Right now, with those narrow lanes, over 80% of our fire calls go through that Main Street one way or the other. With this proposed lane width and stuff, they're not gonna be able to get through Main Street. There's not, you're not gonna have any place for people to move over to. And that doesn't even take into account, if we get a five-inch snowfall, all of a sudden now our parking lanes are shrunk down another three feet. So there's just, if you sit down here, oh, you gotta sit down here for a half an hour and you sit and watch those oversized trucks and stuff, that, we have two ways through Pelican Rapids. And 59 being the main one, if you constrict that down, I'll guarantee you, there'll be more, more problems than what this is supposed to solve. There's just, I mean, the businesses don't want it, the people don't want it, but yet we were led to believe that we were gonna have some input, but that's clearly not the case. If you guys are gonna just put it in without, no matter what Pelican says. I mean, we've got 104 signatures now, I mean, I don't know how many signatures it takes. I could, we could go get 500 more in, in a week. I mean, people just don't want it.
Thank you.
I'll try to be quick, but just a response to stoplights being an inferior product. I'm just, I'm gonna go through the data. Again, we have no fatalities, no serious injuries, no major injuries. So we cannot get any decrease from roundabouts there. We had one, one minor injury in 10 years. So with the roundabout decrease, we see standard across Minnesota, that'll save us one minor injury every 22 years. Meanwhile, we will see a very minor 0.0% increase in property damage only crashes. This is MINDOT's own data, okay? So it's a wash, it is very, very slightly safer for vehicles. Meanwhile, MINDOT's own data, 111.1% increase in bicycle crashes, 17.3% increase in pedestrian crashes. Not recommended for any region with truck traffic over 3% by MINDOT and National Academies of Science. We're at 9.4 for MINDOT's own data. In addition, they do not recommend doing them near significant generators of traffic that have difficulty negotiating roundabouts, such as high volumes of oversized trucks. Intersections of a major arterial and a minor arterial or local road where an unacceptable delay in major road could be created. Highway 59, we have very unbalanced traffic, way more traffic goes through 59. Per MINDOT, roundabouts delay and deflect all traffic entering an intersection and could induce excessive delay or speed inconsistencies to flow into the major arterial. 59's a major arterial by definition. You know, we've went through the loss of parking already. Cost, we went through it. Shared use paths are more. This is MINDOT's own data. So to call them an inferior product, it's not, is it what MINDOT writes or what you say?
Both. Yeah?
Thank you.
That's we got. Half of you are not gonna agree today, but please come down on the 30th and we'll talk about more. Yep?
One more time, you said four lots places on Main Street?
Six.
Six.
Six. Yeah, it's all right, it's pretty close to four. A lot less than 14. So, what's the earlier, pardon?
Where was the...
At the high school.
30th September, 35 feet, 5% 30 feet.
Correct, correct, yep.
And it'll be displayed, just stuff to look at for...
Lot of stuff. Yeah, a lot of stuff.
To me, what was it, public input or public information telling us what we're getting?
It's both. Parts of it are, will tell you what we're getting, and parts of it you can ask questions on, so that's the way, that's the way it is, so. That's the way it has to be, so.
That's possible for...
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
You told us that you wanted to work with us way back from the beginning, so that's what I'm making.
Perfect. Yeah, don't forget we are here. Perfect. Yeah. Don't forget we are here. The reason why MINDOT is here in the first place is because the city asked us to be here. There's a job with even on our schedule, told the city approach, MINDOT said, come and do a job with us, and that's why we're here. Right. And going from 11 and 12 feet's a pretty dang big deal. The city can't overlook that. You know, you want 11 foot drallies and eight foot parking? I mean, that's what it would have been if MINDOT wasn't working with the city on it. You know, so that stuff you guys had to think, a lot of small stuff you guys are forgetting that MINDOT has done for you guys. MINDOT's paying for the consultant. You're not paying for the consultant. That's $1.4 million out of MINDOT's product to design this project. So a lot of things that you asked us to be here, we're here, you know, so. It's very expensive to design these products. Exactly. And one last thing that I'll get out of your hair here is, you know, does like open house, I want to talk about trees briefly. Can I talk about trees, Don? Okay. We did a tree field walk here. We could go Friday. I came down and with our, with, with Mayor from the DNR and also Admiral, we drove the corridor. All the trees impacted with this product, this project. Obviously, by adding shared use paths on both sides, we're taking down a lot of trees. I mean, that's just, they're in the way, they have to come down. And all the trees in front of the school on both sides, you know, they're coming down because they're right where the shared use path is going to go. One away to the east, you know, where the, where this new, new trail is going to go. You know, there's a lot of trees on MINDOT right away. Most of them are, they're coming down because they're in the way of a shared use path. The one question mark that we had was the trees in front of the turkey plant. And those trees we talked about before, I'm trying to save those trees because they're, they're big beautiful trees. So we're currently designing it to save those trees. But it was brought to my attention that maybe the city wants those trees removed. So depending what the city council wants to do, we can remove them because they are old emerald, seem to be old ash trees that are starting to get sick already. So they're going to be dying in, you know, five, 10 years, whatever. And so one suggestion was maybe the city wants those trees removed, then we plan something else instead of, you know, something we can think about in the future. But if you want those trees removed, then we could, we could redesign that corridor now so the shared use path is closer to the road and not behind the trees. So something that think about, let us know very soon because that impacts what we do up there. Otherwise, every tree you see, you know, is probably coming down, it's along the highway on MINDOT right away because the shared use path has, has a goal there, so. You know, people aren't going to be happy. I mean, we know that because the trees, they block front yards and they put, they block noise from, you know, from the street. But if the city wants shared use path to go in there, trees have to come out. Yeah.
When you guys came through, you looked at the trees, were all the trees ash trees?
No, there were some pine trees, some old trees, there's more, more, all the ash trees we focus on because of the Emerald, Emerald Bore ash thing that's coming forth, it's killing ash trees. We try to take them out with the products, projects now. So then, otherwise, there's some trees that are off our right away that we are, that are sick and diseased, we'll talk to the landowner. I may be taking those down too with, with the project they want to. You know, it's old pine trees that are rotten and looking pretty sickly looking.
I think the majority of the trees, if not all of them, by the school and the West Central Initiative.
They're all ash trees. Yeah, most of them are ash trees. Yeah. So think about that, let me know soon so we can, we have a little time, but then we can plan on our tree, tree planting project with, you know, in the future too, if you wanted to put them in there, so. So yeah, anyways, a lot of good discussion. I'm sure I could talk for hours and hours, but you guys want to get rid of me, I'm sure, so.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Yeah, we'll see you guys on the 30th.
Item number eight is West Central Initiative, Samantha Benwetzel Meyer is here this evening. Chairwoman Bruce herself, I believe. She is chairwoman of West Central Initiative.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, thanks for having me this evening. I'm Samantha Benwetzel Meyer. I've been with West Central Initiative in development for just over two years. I think last year probably Rebecca attended, and I know we have Emily Reno on your agenda fairly frequently too, working on different projects. So I just wanted to say, start by saying thank you for your ongoing support to West Central Initiative. I know you've made a pledge maybe three years ago here that continues through 2022, so we appreciate that support. It helps us with our economic, community and workforce development work. And I also wanted to thank you for the honor of letting us be partners with you in many of the projects that you have going on. Those things that Emily's here working with you on, and you have several funds with West Central Initiative, your school, your pool, library, you have a community fund that's a little defunct at the moment, I think, but we can get that up and running again in the future here. So thank you for partnering with us, the honor to partner with you on those projects. I am just also going to share a little bit on what we've been doing over the last year. And I went back to January 1st, 2020, so we could kind of look back over what's been going on since the pandemic. So to Pelican Rapids, we have granted over $170,000. Those were emergency childcare grants, there were six of those, resiliency fund grants, five of those, and that's two nonprofits in your community. And nine small business relief grants. There was $134,000 in loans to your community through West Central Initiative, and that again is from January 1st of 2020. We, we really are able to leverage the support that you give to West Central Initiative through projects like that, through our granting and loaning projects and our planning projects. That's what Emily's working in our planning department. So again, we appreciate that and just wanted to share how we've been able to utilize your gift to leverage our work in your community. And then I am here tonight also to just have a little bit of a conversation to hear what you're working on. I got a little bit of a picture of what's going on in your community right now, but maybe outside of roundabouts, what else are you working on that are kind of goals that WCI might be able to partner with you on in the future? And I know recently we've been invited to help with a housing plan, so we are excited about that too. Housing, childcare, workforce are all very high priorities for us in our work.
The lower swimming pool, I think.
Yes, yes. Yeah. It seems like you have so much energy in the community with things always happening, and that's really exciting. Some energy can be a little hard to bear, but other energy, like the farmer's market coming to town, definitely exciting things, so. I also had on my list, just to ask, you know, you've had so much success with your community, and we have 82 communities in our nine county region, we're visiting our communities annually. And I was just wondering, like, what would you give as advice to some cities that are looking to have some of the success that you are having as a community? Like, what has spurred all this?
I think the way to go, this community made a decision that because they, there's so much diversity here, that they were gonna make a huge effort for everybody to get along. And there's been a number of individuals that have stepped forward to help that process along, but some of the companies here in town have done a lot, you know, they work with that diversity all the time. So there's, you know, kind of a concentrated effort to get that to work.
Yeah.
And I'm probably not being very articulate about it, but it's different than some of the other communities that I've seen that have the diversity that we do here. In other communities, it's opposition, things like that, we're here as, we're trying to make things fit together.
Yeah, definitely. That working together and communication would be a route to success for any community, I'd say. That's great. That you're able to find that through your partnership with leaders in your community. Thank you. If you think of other things that WCI might help with, or other things that kind of come to mind as items that have led to your success, please feel free to reach out. My supervisor, Rebecca, who's come in the past, her business card's in the front there, and you can reach out through her. I'm Samantha, WCIF.org is my email address. And I just wanted to end by sharing a little bit about what we have going on right now, what we're working on. In your packets, there's a flyer for our pandemic revolving loan fund, so that's a big part of our economic development work right now. If you are aware of any businesses in your community that could use some assistance, please send that flyer along to them or have them reach out to us. We're working on Main Street COVID relief grants. The American Recovery Plan funds, we're assisting some of our communities with how to distribute those funds or helping manage that. We have a regional broadband meeting coming up September 16th. And then I am going to leave with Mr. Solga. Three very dense packets. Our comprehensive economic development strategy was just released. That process was a work plan for now through 2026 that we're going to synthesize into one page that we'll share with you after it gets to that point too. But this came out of what the people of our region are recommending as how we should proceed with our work. So it was county commissioners, our EDD board, focus groups of stakeholders, public survey, public comment that developed this very dense packet that I'll leave with you, and that's guiding our work going forward through 2026. So it covers a lot of the work we already highlight and go through, like childcare and workforce stuff, so. Any questions for me while I'm here?
Are you saying we have a community center fund or?
Community fund, yeah. I think in the time that I've been with West Central Initiative, it has not been very active. So it's been over two years that it's not really been doing much. I think that what we've seen as a struggle is that whoever was on that advisory board at one point is no longer participating, and that advisory board did not get repopulated. So we're hopeful that within your community, you have folks who are interested in being a part of that. I think it's your loan fund is a part of that community fund. So there are some assets sitting there with West Central Initiative for your community that we would love to get out to your community with an advisory board that's guiding that work.
What would they, what would be an example that those funds would be used for?
I would have to reference back to the original, so each fund that we have sets up with an agreement that includes their mission statement, and the mission statement guides what those funds would go to.
Basically, in the past, in Pelican Rapids, they were used, that's the funds that the EDC oversees. And is their advisory board for, and then they send the recommendations down to West Central Initiative. But in the past, that, that money was used to provide gap funding for the one success project with Jason Stetson and his business up in the industrial park. It's also been used to provide little mini grants, I'll call them, for different projects. The Faces of Change book that was published that kind of shared the reverse story of Pelican Rapids. There was a grant of $1,000 given to help publish that. So a lot of that was those little things. But the EDC group, you're right, the EDC group has been basically inactive for about two years. There is discussion, I've had discussion with some individuals that want to get that going again, and they want to start using that money. It's about $170,000, and there was $75,000 of that 170,000 that was earmarked and set aside for a business rehabilitation loan program. And that was used to, back when I was on the EDC, actually, there had been applications from businesses in Pelican to use that money to kind of, as leveraging other funds that they were going to get to do work on the buildings. When we had that small city development program that came through, we got a million dollars for homeowners and renters and business, commercial businesses to do work on the front of their buildings or do rehab on the building. A couple of the businesses took advantage of that loan program from the community fund to help fund their fund, because they had to come up with a match. And so they, they kind of applied for and got their match for the small city program funds. That match for them came from the community fund. But it's been pretty inactive for the last couple of years, but hopefully.
Is a portion of that earmarked for Airheart or they have their own?
Airheart has their own. It's actually, the, the EDC was actually in Pelican Rapids Area Economic Development Corporation, and Airheart is a part of that. But they have their own separate community fund, as does a lot of communities have community funds, and West Central Initiative administers those funds towards those communities.
Thank you for the background.
Sure. Any other questions for Samantha? Thank you for introducing yourself to say that you're very much for you as West Central Initiative.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me.
Item number nine is dam review, assessment worksheet, review and approval. Don, do we have anybody from Houston Engineering or DNR or something?
No.
Okay, so you're going to make the presentation, right? And there was a empty handout in our packet.
Yeah, this, what I've got, excuse me, what I've got on the screen is what was in your packet. And I'm not going to go through this whole thing. That's why I put it in your packet so you can read through it. But in a nutshell, this EAW worksheet, this environmental worksheet, basically is part of the process that the DNR is going through. As they put the plans and specs together to remove the dam and replace it with the rock raft and any other infrastructure that's going to go in that space or along the river as part of their project. As they're doing, creating the plans and specs, they also go through this environmental assessment process where they have to submit a document that's, that's reviewed or put out there for public comment period, 30 day public comment period. I think I shared this with the council that this was coming a few meetings ago. We got a little bit of an update on the, on the dam project, where things were at. But this document was sent over from Houston Engineering and the DNR so that we could look through that with the intent that if there was any questions or anything like that, the city could give them questions back to the DNR. If everything looked fine in here based on, this is just a draft of it, if everything looked fine, then the council would just approve the draft, and the next step would be the DNR then taking this and putting it out there for that 30 day comment period. That 30 day comment period involves publishing it in the paper, the Pelican Press. Also, we will be putting it up on the city website with a link for people to be able to review this, this same document. And then after that 30 day comment period, then my understanding is that at that point, the DNR would then, based on comments that we received, the state would basically approve the environmental assessment that was done. So really, the council's task in this, and my task in this, was just to review this, go through, read through the pages, see if there's anything that jumps out to you as, wait a minute, you know, information. And all those typos in it, because I went through the document, I did, I did pick out some stuff that was just, you know, kind of typos, basically. But in my review of it, there wasn't anything that, I guess, jumped out at me that, you know, really hasn't been talked about or has it been presented to the community at the public, public meetings and stuff like that. There was nothing in it that kind of jumped out at me as, as not, not a part of what we've been trying to accomplish, I guess. I don't know. So would, do you guys have any questions? Did you read through it? Does everything look?
Don, are you saying this, at this point, is it draft?
It's a, yeah, it's a, it's a draft. It's, which is a draft, it'll be finalized after that 30 day.
So is this saying it's a tighter being published in the press?
I don't know that. I'm assuming, I'm assuming that.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know how much gets published, but I don't know if it's just the links to the, but I know it'll be on the website for people to be able to come in and pull up the whole document, read through it, and then comment on it. Whether that's a link to the DNR site or whether the document itself is on our website or both, I'm just going to see. I did, I tried to get ahold of the DNR today to see if there was anybody that could be, I can attend via Zoom or whatever, just to be able to answer some questions might add as part of the process, but that's the way I understand the process. I mean, this isn't anything outside of just you reviewing it, to see if any major jumps out at you before they put it out there for comments.
Oh, so are you questioning them?
Well, I got to admit I didn't have time to be like that. Some of the, some of the before and after numbers in there are very interesting. They kind of give you what the, what the, for example, what acreage it is now and then what it is proposed to be after.
I have questions relating to the rounds they had listed, you know, where they are.
Well, those types of things too, when that 30 day comment period opens up, those questions can be thrown out there for them too, that are going to verify so that at the end of that period, they'll be, you know, corrections made and approvals made or whatever.
Anyone like to make a motion? Do we have today that?
Yeah, they'd like the council approval on it, and so we can, so I can sign off on it, and then, and then it kind of just gets the process going. The 30 day public comment period coming up.
I'm going to approve through the environmental assessment sheet for the Pelican, not the state on the patient.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the EAS, EAW, excuse me. Discussion, discussion.
If there's any changes to this, I mean, it's obvious we're not going to make any, but at this point, but if there's any changes to this, will we be notified about it or?
I believe so.
We're going to have to approve it.
Yeah, I think you guys, they would have to come back for approval.
Yeah, maybe, if we're approving a draft, are we going to approve a final?
That's, I don't know that question, but I would assume that if this is just a draft, if the final would come back if this is implemented.
Because I know some of those businesses that we listed, you know, for hazardous waste per se, but those long businesses no longer exist in Pelican. They operate under a different name. Any more discussion?
Well, like the businesses, I see the hardware store has it as waste, it's just, it's water from the roof. So should those people be notified?
I think that's to the point of the 30 day comment period as well, I think.
Yeah.
I didn't know, like, people were thrilled. I mean, I, I've looked through this more than Steve did, but.
They have a standard for these things. Yes.
These things that you're bringing up, basically, we just make sure that, that, you know, we make note of them and get, get, get the information to the DNR.
The council, if individuals, we could present a question.
Well, you could, yeah, you should be able to do the comment period, but also the things you're talking about now, you can just basically make sure that I'm aware of them, and I can pass them on to them also. So you're, you're approving the draft tonight, but you have some, just comments or questions?
This is required by law?
Yeah, this is part of the process. As it, when they submit, they have a 30 day comment period to be able to, to get this document where it needs to be to sit, to submit it for final approval to the state. document where it needs to be to sit, to submit it for final approval to the state. Because everything has to have an environmental assessment. When you're moving down, and you're doing major street projects, highway projects, all that stuff is part of the process now.
The DNR paid for this, really, or what?
The grant, Houston Engineering did it, and it's going to be paid, it'll be paid, this document will be paid for under the grant that we got with the, from the DNR to replace the dam. This is all part of that.
That's our money.
Yeah. And all that, that's our money pays for it. It's our grant, we're going to pay for it, but it's good grant fund.
Any more questions? Here you go, all in favor, shake a couple of say aye. Both aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Item number ten is the twenty-twenty-two general budget discussion. Remember, we talked about this a couple of times previously at council meetings, and we had the option, we can either pass it this evening or wait until the last council meeting this month on the twenty-ninth of September, which will still be Daniel, I forget if it's Don or Phil coming. So, Don, you want to open it up?
Sure. You know, basically, it really is, it comes down to the same conversation we had last time with the documents that were in the last packet. I don't know if you want me to go through this whole thing again, or if you guys have taken some time since the last council, we need to kind of go through and see, you know, what, 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 what you might want to consider. Because obviously, the biggest part of this thing with this, with this eighteen percent, nineteen percent just area, was all driven by really two things. The funding for the senior center to start looking into that, and the funding for an economic development director. You take those two things out of here, and that's pretty much going to wipe out the eighteen percent increase. Then the other part of it that was driving the, the levy increases was the special levy, which went in, in twenty-twenty-one, is two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollars, and it's going to two-hundred and, pretty much, two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars. So you've got a sixty-thousand-dollar increase, and that's driven by the pool. With the city basically going forward with the one-point-five-million-dollar addition to the pool and not waiting for the state is what that was, that was all about, you know. The difficult thing is, in some sense, what makes it kind of difficult is, if we'd like to get the pool done, we need a million and a half dollars. Do we put it in the budget and then see what happens with the state? Of course, obviously, this budget kicks into place on January one. We won't know anything from the state, from a bonding standpoint, until May timeframe. We'll know if the house has included it in their, in their bonding bill, but whether it makes it through the negotiations with the governor and the House, or the Senate, we don't know.
But look at that other pocket of funds.
But that other pocket of funds is the one thing that is, is just the unknown at this point, because we know there's money there, they haven't put the program together yet, so we haven't seen the application or nothing. All we know is that, that we are going to submit an application once they're available. And from what we were told, and led to believe, was that the timing of that would basically be such that we can apply for it, we know whether we're going to get those funds way before the legislature decides on what they're going to do from a bonding standpoint. But that's about all we know about those funds, is the timing, the timing of those funds, if they in fact do put the application process in place, would allow us to apply, hopefully get funding, and stay under the same schedule of doing the pool construction as if the city council had bonded for it themselves at one-point-five million and increased the budget. The only thing that delays us a year is waiting for the state and having to truly wait for the state. We can, we can still go forward, hoping the state funds it, leaving this stuff, even the budget, and then if we don't get the bonding, we've got the money through the city's budget to go forward with the project. But it will, by that time, probably help delay it. The other thing about this is, is, you know, you take the pool part out of it, and, you know, you, you basically are, are pretty much going to be at where you were last year as far as the special levy goes. The other, the other piece of this is, you can always reduce the levies in December, but, you know, at the end of the year. You can't go higher, but you can go lower. The tricky part, though, is, do, will we know by, you know, December, when this has to be turned into the state, do we, do we know if we're going to have one-point-five million from another source at that point? Don't know the question yet. Not until we know about, more about the, more about that possibly new funding source. So we do know one thing. Based on the pros and cons that I shared with you guys last time, and the discussion that I had with our financial advisor, they're not going to make a recommendation, but they're going to just tell you guys that it's not going to the city's best financial interest to go forward without finding another way to pay for the pool. And that's either the state funding or this other, and I, I laid out the reasons for that last time, is that we ask you tax abatement money for bonds, and if we, debt taps us up, it could affect, it will affect having, being able to use tax abatement funding for the senior center, for that bridge going across the dam, if we had to use that. And it could impact how many houses we could do tax abatements or tax refunds on, under that program that we've already got in place.
So if you remove the pool, what does that mean to the county?
Well, the eighteen percent, like I mentioned last time too, there's two different levies. There's the general levy, which is the eighteen percent increase, and that's only tied to the senior center and economic development director. Then there's a special levy, which is this number down here. That's where the pool is. So if you look at the notes over here, in twenty-twenty-one, sixty thousand dollars, basically, well, that's the increase, so about fifty-two thousand of this sixty thousand dollar increase in the special levy, fifty-two-five of that is just for the debt service in twenty-twenty-one, uh, twenty-twenty-two for the pool, if we did the pool through, through the, the city So really, if we don't do that.
There's no way to answer that question?
Well, it would basically be, you'd be taking sixty, fifty-two thousand dollars off of this number. So you're still going to have a little bit of a, of a levy increase, but that's because some of the other debt service that we have to pay for has gone up a little bit. We also still have to include the two thousand dollars for this, the Miller house over here that we approved. The council already approved the tax refund under that housing refund program. So because of some, you know, minor increases in D's, very minor, if any, and this two thousand, that would still increase this two-twenty-two, you know, by, you know, maybe six, seven thousand dollars.
This doesn't affect the eighteen?
But that does not affect, this does not affect. Anything we do in this block right here to reduce this number has no effect on eighteen. The eighteen is just driven by the senior center category and economic development director. And like I said before, you know, we're just kind of, just a starting point of what we could possibly, hopefully get an economic development director position for, figuring that hundred-and-five thousand, and that's with a seventy thousand dollar salary plus benefits.
We haven't decided, you know, if this is important, if I can actually go after one yet, right? You, of creating that position. We've, we've discussed it, but we haven't decided.
No, you haven't decided. You said building the budget and let's see what it looks like.
So, Don, you're stating that in the general budget, that the eighteen percent, you know, if we went through this line item by line item, about a hundred bucks there, a thousand bucks there, it's not going to make a whole lot of difference because of the two driving forces, the senior citizen center and economic development director.
That's correct.
So then we have to decide if we want one of them, or both of them, or none of them?
That would, that would be, you know, basically, yeah. You know, if you, if it, you know, I kind of talked about it last time, if you took the four, you know, the three or four things that are driving these numbers, the pool, the bridge, the, the senior center down there, and an economic development position, and even though all four of them are important to the community, and I think the city wants all of them, but if you had to prioritize those, what priority would you put them in to the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget? Because it's going to have an effect for a few years. I think, you know, that's not an easy, an easy question to answer, because I, I think in my mind, we've already got a massive amount of fundraising done for the pool, and you can't give that money back. To me, that pool has probably got to be number one, the number one focus.
Which is also the largest bite to us.
Which is also the largest bite.
It may not be the most responsible thing. I mean, the funding is a sad deal. We can't return it, or whatever.
Right.
But, yeah, I don't know. I mean, that pool is a giant mess on that, on the, on the year that they're fighting.
That's why, that's why the financial advisor said, you're, you're really tying your, 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 by, by the city funding that one-point-five million dollar addition, you're already doing one-point-three, to add another one-point-five, just ties our hands too much, and so she just wanted the council to be aware that that's, in their opinion, is not a good, good move. So, you know, to take it out of the budget and then hope that we get one of the other two ways of funding it, is one way of looking at it, but if we don't get either one of them, then we're going to be having the same conversation next year.
At a higher cost.
At potentially higher costs.
And it'll be the same thing as what we talked about the last time, I mean, still, there's a lot of responsible responsibilities to take into consideration.
So, this is my take, in my opinion, and take that for what it's worth, or don't take it for what it's worth.
No, okay.
But by not going forward with the pool bonding does not say that we're not going forward with the pool. It does not say that we're not trying to get funding for the pool. I think as, in my head, we, as a city council, are still supporting the project of the pool.
I can only picture myself, but I think the pool would be a great asset to the city. But that said, we're still talking about a financial news project.
Correct. Well. So I guess, for me, it comes down to which, between the EDA director and the senior center community building, which of those two do we see getting the most return for our dollars on? And in my opinion, that would be the EDA director, because they would have the potential of, through their work, through their job, through their job description, would have the potential of bringing other businesses and other income into the tax base, which would affect that.
You'd probably have a shorter return with the senior citizen center.
I don't know that we would ever get a return on that, it would just be a bill.
Yeah, you'd have a return with the. Because the senior, yeah, the senior center is basically going to take some planning, and then, you know, based on if you decide to knock the building down or not, we know, we just kind of have a really rough, you know, we're looking at, to make that building that sits there EDA compliant, and updating the HVAC and whatever, we're looking at easily a half a million plus. That's just to get to the point where you, now you have a project, now you get to find a half a million plus.
But there's been quite a, a response, or, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't we want the senior citizen center? There are many people that approach me. So if it's not available, they, they take their party out of town and spend business out of town.
Which they've been doing now for a long time.
Yeah, yeah. But we like to get.
Yeah.
Center here developing their assets.
And even if you decided to move with the, the senior citizen center, it's probably still, again, it's going, you're going to have to bond for it, which is going to add more debt service, unless you could lobby the state to give you money for a senior citizen center.
Community center.
A community center in development, or whatever.
I, I think that, looking at from an EDA director's perspective, or from a, a business owner's perspective, if an event center, community center, was a good idea, there would be developers knocking down the doors to put one of their own as a business and run it, not as a community-funded, city-funded business. So, again, I don't see how, for now, that the, the community building that we have now acquired.
But they're all shitty, they're owned by the city.
Yeah, not by the developer.
But, again, and that, every one of them is subsidized by the city, even, you know, that wonderful, you know, we get the Purim community center thrown at us as an example every time, that is subsidized by the city to a huge amount, and in addition to that, Beryl Afon, Kenny's Candy, all those guys threw tons of money at that thing, and we don't, and we have that many businesses of that size that would do the same funding. Again, I think it's putting the pool project, and I've, I've been the guy out here that's probably challenged the council about the pool the longest. I would say putting the pool on hold for spending money and continuing to work towards the other avenues of funding, and we work towards the EDA director as a, as a position there.
So, the director, what, what do you do there?
Not now.
No, keep that in the budget for the twenty-twenty-two, and I'll get that.
So if you took, if you took the dollars out, this twenty-six thousand is what I had in here to hopefully hire an architect to try and work with the city to put some plan together for that building down there, whether it's, we have to decide, are we remodeling the current one, or are we knocking it down and starting over again? The other, well, let's just leave it at that. So if I took this twenty-six thousand dollars out of here, we've still got a fifteen percent levy increase. So really, the senior center, it's only twenty-six thousand dollars, so it only knocked it out three percent.
Three percent. Don, where are you getting the twenty-six? I can't really see it.
The twenty-six? Oh, I, oh, the twenty-six is what I had in the budget.
I'll look at the other. That was just for engineering?
That was just a, yeah, I, I just figured twenty thousand dollars would hopefully help, you know, for some way of, of starting the planning of what we're going to do with that building. You know, I do know that, if you remember Emily from West Central Mission, Emily Reno had shared that she had applied, put in an application to the USDA for technical assistance to take a look at that senior center. to take a look at that senior center down there, and they could give us a technical, technical expertise as to what would have to happen with the building, but they wouldn't be able to give us equitable documents or anything like that, they could just, from an A D A standpoint, another thing, they could let us know what's wrong with that building. And, and from my understanding, I did reach out to her the other day and ask, where is this at? Um, and she had kind of replied, well, to her understanding, I think there was a kind of a miscommunication in the groups here, because, not here, but she was of the understanding that the city council put that building under the umbrella of the park board, and now the park board was basically responsible to try and figure out what's gonna happen with the U S D A, and I just learned this last couple of days, haven't had enough time to think about it. So, so, and that goes back to when the park board came and asked the council if they could have that building under the umbrella, and I said, what does that mean? Well, this is kinda, I guess, what it means. But, so there's still that question as to what can the U S D A provide as we deal with that building, and is it under a grant, or do we pay them for this type of stuff? I don't know, because I wasn't part of any of that discussion.
From what I've heard from that discussion, and only my understanding, which is very limited, that the U S D A would only act as a type of steering committee essentially.
Yeah.
They cannot give us any hard facts, any financial assistance, any, anything, they'll walk in there and say, this is what's broke, this is what needs to be fixed, and you'd have to get your engineers to make it happen.
And you would have to get your own architects, but here's what we see the problem is, now hire your architects to, to fix this stuff. U S D A does have funding sources, their pockets of money, but it's still low.
Right.
You know, you're still paying back, you know, debt service on it, so that's a whole no matter for discussion, but as far as funding sources, it is one funding source for that project down there is U S D A, but we found, more times than not, the U S D A is more expensive than going out and funding ourselves and just giving them money in a different way. But there is some, but there is some technical assistance that they can provide as, as it relates to that building. It could clearly come out of this budget for this year and, and still continue to work with the park board, or Emily, or whoever, with the U S D A, to see what we, what could come out of that, and maybe it's looked at again in twenty twenty-two. But, again, the fact of the matter remains, the building is set unusable, um, until something's done with it, so it delays anything for a year, potentially, um, but it does only knock out three percent out of the levy increase too.
Can, can.
I think.
I, I just wanted to remind everybody that when we got the senior citizen center, we also got their assets, which was about thirty-three thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, and we could potentially use that money to hire an architect, which could come off the budget.
Yeah, so this could come off the budget, we could use the funds that are already in, in the accounts, and keep the bringing that up.
Yeah.
Um, and we have thirty thousand dollars to work with, so maybe that would get us where we need to be, and this doesn't even need to be in here.
It's really good for the front.
One of the things that, you know, grants have to know is people look at it. I think we're at least obligated to find out what we can do with the building. So whether that money comes out of the levy, or this money here, I think we ought to proceed with that and just find out where we're at with it.
We do know, though, you know, this twenty thousand, twenty-six thousand dollars, I guess, it all can't come out, because only twenty thousand of that was being used for, you know, the architectural stuff. We still have expenses having that building. There's electricity, there's heating costs, you know, utility costs, that type of stuff. So there is still, you know, six thousand dollars related to just operating that building the way it says now. So that's a hidden number two.
So you're saying you could knock off the twenty thousand?
Yeah, I could knock off.
And then we could pay for the study of the money.
Depending on how much that costs. The U S D A, I don't believe, costs anything. It's when we want to take the next step. They'll be able to help us determine what's wrong with the building, what has to be done for the building, and then from there we can.
That would require a separate motion for me to go after it, correct?
No.
Well.
At a, at a later date.
Yeah.
Would that end up with us? In any way, if we were to just hire an architect to come, or they're not gonna tell us all the details, we, we, what you're saying is we need to find out what needs to be done to tell an architect, but then do it his job or her job?
Yeah, I think there's some benefit in, in using the, the technical knowledge of the U S D A to help us in whatever way they can, because as soon as we hire an architect, to help, because the architect can do the same thing, what do you want? And it's gonna be a lot of meetings with the city and the city council, trying to figure out what that project's gonna be down there, and then they put together plans and specs, and you get to that point, and you decide on what the project is gonna be. I think the U S D A can help us, potentially, as I understand it, can help us at least start from the standpoint of what's wrong and needs to be upgraded in the building.
And still, we'll have, if that is a free service, that's a sub-technical free theory operation, we still will have then the assets gained from the building to possibly hire an architect if we're coming out.
Yes, yes. Stephen.
Council's right.
I've been thinking a lot about the budget and economy and everything. I would take the twenty grand and tear the building up. I, these, you started pumping, and you know how I felt about this building. I mean, you work and work on it, and you still have an old building. Um, and new buildings are so efficient, the heating and cooling, electric, it's just minimal. Um, I don't know, I see forty-five hundred, I don't know if that's a lot of heat and electricity, but.
I took that off of what their, their past experiences have been. We looked at their bills.
So that's heating and cooling, and for one year.
Utility costs, forty-five hundred bucks to heat and cool.
In the meantime, the, uh, wheels aren't wheels and everything, it's still be popped out of there.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So that'd be a thousand dollars in the building there, less.
But that's the other thing, we would just, we would have to move them out of there if we decide to tear the building down.
Yeah.
But they may be relocated, I don't know.
They need a kitchen.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Council's right.
Well, in regard to the victory picture, I'm concerned about the economy. I see things happening with shortages and inflation, it's, uh, there are companies that cannot fix up, and I, this whole next year, I'm concerned about. Uh, so I don't wanna hit the local businesses, I don't wanna hit anybody very hard with it. I'm afraid this next year could be tough, so I'm concerned. And I've made the motion for the economic director, um, I think it could be good. I don't know if you could find somebody right now.
At that price, we don't know, and, you know, that, will we hire him on January one? No, because I've still got a job description to do, um, and then, and then, you know, make sure we have all that put in place before we start advertising for him. So you guys will have a chance to do job descriptions, you'll have a chance to, you might even have to just get together, kind of, on one of a committee to look down, how we put together that, so we're all in the same picture.
So relating to the budget tonight, could we just slash that twenty thousand dollars out of it?
We did.
Okay.
No, I think it's down to sixteen percent.
Okay, so then, then we aren't even concerned with the community center tonight?
No.
Okay, so that's off the table tonight, so that is just a mediator inquiry. Does, is a, is the council comfortable making the decision tonight, or you want two more weeks to think about it?
Well, I wanna throw something out here. I'm gonna, I'd post the passes like it's tonight. We can reduce it in December if we want it, but I think we should have a special meeting sometime and talk about some of these things, like our liquor store funds, um, the swimming pool, all these projects that we've got going on, and talk about them in detail, and, yeah, just to get everybody on the same page. Ren and I and John, we sat there and spent a lot of time on this budget, and it's unfair for you guys, you know, because you didn't, weren't there for that whole discussion, but getting everybody together, when we went to that discussion, you know, it's pretty hard to do, to get six people together for these meetings, so I'm gonna, with that, I'm gonna move that we pass this budget tonight with the idea that we're gonna review it, um, before December, and decide on the final budget December.
Got a motion, is there a second?
So as it stands, if it wasn't a change at all, we're looking at sixteen, or is that zero nine?
Correct.
Presenting a picture.
Or was it going back to that?
No, sixteen.
We're taking that twenty thousand off.
Take it off. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. No discussion.
I don't know, at, you know, we've never seen a budget like this.
No.
And, well, the other thing was, we've got all these projects going on, and we've got the demand for them, we've got the demand for the swimming pool, we've had the demand for the economic development director, we've had the people ask for the senior center for I don't know how long, and we've got this bridge project going on. Those four projects, um, if we're gonna proceed with that, next year they're gonna have to pay for it one way or another. Um, I mean, they go get some kind of feedback, we'll say, no, we don't want this particular project, or we don't want this, but, I mean.
Lou could put it down like a picture.
And they'll tell us.
Any more discussion? Discussion?
Is it walk off, Lou?
Yeah. Strang.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Markra.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Fraser.
Aye.
Hey, motion, bad. I have a question about the senior building. Is it possible to shuffle water out of the faucet?
Thank you.
Forget it, we're cooking out of it.
We're cooking.
Yeah.
You know, we really have to leave it as it is because we're cooking.
Okay, moving on, item number eleven, liquor store personnel.
Yeah, this is just kind of a F Y I, um, you know, we, we mentioned to the council on meeting night at the last meeting that we needed a part-timer, and so we posted, we still need a part-timer. Um, we're not getting any applications, I guess that's the sign of the times, everybody in downtown is looking for help and nobody wants to work. So what we decided to do is, we are gonna have a, just a perpetual advertisement in the paper, and we will continue to advertise for it until the position's filled, and when we have somebody, we will bring them before the council. That's all I wanted to let you know.
Isn't there any discussion of closing on Sunday, or something like that?
You know, Maggie hasn't, I don't think she's stopped long enough to think that through, whether she wants to continue to be open as many hours or what, you know, she's just operating as she's been operating, and she needs a person. It's worth a discussion to have, I guess, I could just ask her to think, think in different terms, instead of staff, think of hours, because do they really need to be open Sundays? You know, when do they stop being open on Sunday?
I, I thought she said a labor day.
Labor day, so they're gonna be stopping anyway, that part of it, um, so through the winter, it's just, you know, business as usual without Sunday open, which helps a little bit, but in the grand scheme of things.
So, any more questions for Don? It's Gary Don, item number twelve, library report, do you have anything there?
I don't really have much, well, I shouldn't say that. Much did come out of the library last time. Most of it was due to our non-observant emergency funding and whatnot came through, there was a board motion, or board action to retroactively, uh, install a COLA of three percent for twenty twenty-one, uh, due to this funding that came through, I mean, and donations. Donations can never be counted, they weren't there, uh, when the board opted to not do a COLA increase back in January, when the city did, uh, these monies came through, so the board opted to, like, get on board with that and do a three percent, uh, retroactive from January first. That's the largest thing that's occurred at our meeting. That will be the biggest jolt probably for the city.
I mean, so they got originally two, and then it's three and one on top of that? Is that right?
No, they got zero.
Zero.
When the council gave three.
Basically, the action was taken to stay up, be with the city.
All right.
And also, as you know, the payment from the pay request from their architect, we as my report table that.
Yeah.
Um, because we need to know more information on the hit, the punch list, uh, and kind of, I think, to see how the city's feeling about it.
Have they gotten, uh, quote, done something like that for the interior?
I think most of the work's been done, from my understanding, and I don't, unfortunately, I haven't been able to on that, most of that, punch list has been done, with the exception of some, I think maybe, um, Greek word, uh, possibly she dropped, I think some painting and. Lou, I know there was some work to be done on your building as well, was there anything taken care of today?
They did some, uh, repairs. Um, I think we're fairly settled, but we have a.
Is that here, is that eleven inch rain or whatever you had in Belkin, you might have had some water or something?
Right, and he went up and found there was a blockage right there, though. It did not appear to be a roof damage situation.
I didn't know that either, no. These were part of the reasons we needed the table until we got more information. I don't have, though, other, any further information on that. Those are the two large things I wanted to bring to the council, from the library.
Any questions for her? Gary Don, is there a motion to approve the library report, which is in your package?
I'll move the, approve the library.
Got a motion, second, discussion? 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 Gary Don, one favor, she can kind of say aye. What was the same? Motion, Gary. Thank you. Item number thirteen, administrator, administrator report.
Yes, since the last meeting, I've been working with the city clerk and prepping for this council meeting tonight, which is usually on my report. I'm still working on the wastewater treatment facility power loss claim, um, that happened a few months back, uh, just getting, trying to wrap up invoices and paperwork to submit to the insurance company so we can get reimbursed. They are gonna send us one check just to, to cover some of what, uh, we've had to pay out. And then attended the twenty twenty-four project highway, um, steering, or, uh, staging meeting, and that was where they kind of talked a little bit about the, the one to two years, and that's where we kind of learned, as they were looking at this stuff, uh, where we first kind of got, we got to realize that downtown between the lights can only be shut down for a couple of months. Um, even though the rest of the street project is still, still going on, it doesn't mean the city won't be impacted in some way, because we're still gonna have various areas, obviously, still under construction. Um, so, also, I performed our annual commercial driver's license clearinghouse checks, a new requirement from the state, and I think I mentioned this last year when I had to do it, once a year, I have to go in and I have to do a check, they have a clearinghouse that has all the C D L operators in, and I have to basically check every one of our street department guys, the C D Ls, to make sure that they are still. to make sure that they are still authorized and okay to drive. So, um, it's funny because I go in there and do that check, but before I can do that check, I have to buy, because we have four, so I have to buy four credits to do the check. Each credit is a dollar 25. So I run a credit card for five bucks to do these checks. Any sense of this? Anyway. I coordinated with Danielle to get the mailings out, the annexation notices, because on October 12th, we'll have that public hearing on the annexation of the property on west of the industrial park, uh, where the Good County Garage is going to go. I attended the 2024 Street Project, the actual monthly meeting that we hold every month on the second Thursday. I started doing some research on the bridge information that we're going to, when this House Investment Committee comes on the 22nd, the, you know, we're going to have things put in place for when they tour the swimming pool and then also go over to the bridge. So the plan is that they're going to go be at the pool first and that's where the tour will start. Once they get done at the pool, and that'll probably take a half hour, maybe more, from that point, we're going to, everybody is going to walk from the pool across the rotary bridge over to the dam. And I encourage all the councilmen to be there. I'm sure you're supportive of it, but then we're going to go over to the dam and we're going to have some information there. And that's the stuff that, that I'm working on basically with the DNR. We want to have a couple of DNR people there also. But some, some type of flyer, some type of informational packet to hand to this House Investment Committee regarding the dam, the bridge and the dam project. Then we'll be walking back to the pool again, so whoever can make it, that'd be wonderful. The pool committee, and I did attend a pool committee, uh, meeting last night, they're taking care of the, you know, what's going to happen there. We are going to be having another, uh, meeting at some point, I think before the 22nd, to make sure all of our ducks are in a row. The pool committee is going to be working hard on what they're going to display as far as boards. Larry's, or Mark Doc and Don Larry's is, is trying to work out some coffee and those and that type of thing for this group to just have it all set up. So we're just kind of planning and getting the logistics in place. Also working on the liquor store phone issue, um, the last couple, uh, couple of weeks or a week or so. You know, we had put that PBX phone system in City Hall and the one down there so we could communicate without dialing out, you just pick and put it, hit button and answer. But they've had, two or three times they've had issues with the phone down there. We're not sure why. They use it a little bit differently than we do. But theirs is really, you know, ours, basically our phone system goes into our, our internet goes into our phone system, then it goes off our computers. Down there, because of the point-of-sale system and everything else, they don't even, they use, they hook the, the internet into their phones for the PBX phone system so they're on our network and everything, but they don't go from there to their computer. They get their internet from a separate line. So because she keeps having problems with these phones, and I'm not sure if it's operator error or what it is, we're taking that phone, we're putting it back on the analog system. Maggie never liked this one to begin with, and so I finally said, fine, let's go back to the old system. So tomorrow, Harvey will be in there and they're going to put the old system back in and take the PBX system out of there. On a quarterly basis, we have to do, take stormwater samples out of the airport and get them tested, uh, and then send the test results in to the MPCAs. So Brian got the sample, got it tested, and I filed a report the other day. I attended the Artel County Community Development Authority's community updates, again, that we do on a monthly basis, and this one was kind of geared around housing again, which it usually is, but, um, there, there, you know, potentially is going to be funding given to the HRA to help with additional housing stuff. And they're also doing a study, a tiny white study regarding housing needs and that type of thing too. And today, as a matter of fact, all this, they're asking all the communities to submit accounts and the type of housing that we've done since 2015. So I got that together and sent that to them today. And then, um, I continue to, from time to time, I have to review legal documents from the attorneys that, on this personnel issue that we're dealing with from the ex-employee. And, um, I continue to do that. And actually, I think it's scheduled for the next council meeting. We'll be having a closed session to update the council and talk a little bit about what's going on there. That's my report. Any questions for Doug?
I was just curious, I realized you were going through the, uh, land thing up there kind of last night. I was curious if the county's given any indication of what they would like to see possibly breaking down up there in the middle?
I, I think they're getting close, they've put the bid documents out. And so I've been getting calls from basically four or five contractors, because everybody, they always do this. You know, the project in town, that's not the city. Or even sometimes when it is a city, they call and ask, you know, what's the, what's the building permit fee? Do they need to figure that in? Because it could be quite high. This is a $3 million building, so it would be kind of substantial, they want to know what that is. So I've been getting calls and, um, it seems like they're getting pretty close. I think they had to have the bids in this week, I think. So the county commissioners will be getting those bids and be awarding them. So I'm thinking that sometime this fall they'll start breaking them down. And I know they want the city water and sewer extension, but I haven't heard anything on that yet. I think that's, um, I know that Apex Engineering is their engineer and I know that Apex has got some cost estimates to extend the water and sewer. And I, and I believe that because where that infrastructure is going to go, it's not just a benefit for, in the long run, it's not just a benefit for the county, but I'm not sure what the participation percentage would be county, city, because I haven't heard anything from them on that. Maybe they're paying for all of it, I just don't think so. So, should be so.
The water and sewer probably wouldn't be extended this fall.
No, no. In fact, by the time we get through the annexation process and our code, whenever something's annexed into the city, it's annexed into zoned agriculture, all agricultural. So it's got to be rezoned. So once the annexation public hearing is over, you guys approve the annexation, it goes right to the planning commission right away to get a rezone done. And that also is a public hearing process. So by the time it gets all done, it's zoned properly, it's annexed, and it will be remembered. Which means it's probably not going to get too far, this one.
Doug, could you tell me about the payment I asked about for the water bills? I saw it in the flyer, it didn't say it was credit card or checking or?
Oh, Danielle, you can explain the new system.
Yeah, so you can now pay your water bill, utility bill online.
I saw that.
Yeah, and, um, and it's, it's anything. You, you can pay for it by check, by credit card, debit card, whatever.
Right from the city website?
Yeah, so if you just go to the city website, it says pay utility bill now, I think, or something like that. And you click on that and then it gives you different options.
So how much do we pay for that?
It's the same as the, I mean, we accept credit cards here, so it's the same kind of a system.
Is it a percentage or the?
Yeah, it's usually a percentage, I mean, it's a percentage, I think of like, for a credit card, it's a percentage, and I think if it's done by check, it's like 50% of charge or something like that.
So those people that were running, paying their bills by credit card, we're still paying the fee for that. So now instead of paying a credit card company, it's just the fee that's, that's, it goes towards this system instead. So it's just shifting the percentage around.
So like, it's less than 5%?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure, I haven't actually gotten my first, I mean, we just started taking it, I think on the first.
Oh, why is that though?
Oh, we, well, we, we could never do it online before.
But when they brought the card in, it was.
Oh, when they pay here, it was about 3%.
There are several businesses, you know, they have two prices.
Might be more, yeah.
One by credit card and one by check, they have to.
And this, you know, we could pass that fee on to the people paying that way, just like the credit card. But, yeah, but, you know, we look at it as it takes, in a sense, it frees up our staff that aren't using their time to do those transactions, because people are doing them online. And so our staff can get other things done that they need to get done.
Okay, any other questions for Doug or Danielle? Uh, item number 14, mayor report, just two or three items here. I also attended that, uh, complete street meeting on September 2nd of August. We talked a lot about the public input, the public information meeting at the school on 30th of September. Also a, a standard, Helen Rapids Complete Streets Committee meeting on September 9th. And then this last Saturday, I requested, presented welcome at Milt's Bar, mainly through local foods, local places. They had Deep Roots Festival where they had the, uh, grass roots, excuse me, Sodh Home Theater actors were out there to put on a play. And there were demonstrations of food, food making, they had kids activity. They had a couple of their bands that played out there on Saturday evening, afternoon and evening. And then yesterday, I met with the administrators, told them to review the agenda for this evening's meeting. Any questions? Scary Doug, I see no other business on this evening's agenda, is there a motion? Motion, second, all favors, you can kind of say aye. Close the stand, meeting adjourned.
Recording stopped.
Is there anybody else here, Doug?